Well, should we tell you where they did work or?
Heck, yes.
They'll let me know, but we don't want to tell anybody where they even are half of them. You know how it was. But there's crimes that have been solved by these cameras.
I understand that.
Well, you can't possibly think of every camera that's going to be hung up just so we're going to eliminate every crime in City of Sundbury because we hung some cameras up.
No, maybe you do. No, I absolutely don't. There could be an A to help. But I think that some of them could be better positioned. The river would be a good example. Those cameras could be better positioned.
Where?
I think in the highest crime rates. Crime rate areas.
We do have, is it five? Chief, how many portable cameras do we have that haven't been?
Seven.
So we have seven portable cameras that are put in locations at the chief's and the mayor's discretion. So, I mean, there's, there's, and the purpose of them being bought was to move them around to the higher crime areas, but not let anybody know where they're at when you're moving.
And, and that would be a good thing to do. What I'm saying is some of the cameras aren't as effective as they might be, so that would be up to you folks to consider.
Well, it's up to the chief. He knows what the crime area is.
What would you assume the high crime rate in Sundbury is?
The high crime rate in Sundbury? Highest crime rate in Sundbury?
I believe the chief could.
Well, I'll tell you what, Dale. First of all, I think that an error was made in monitoring the cameras real time.
Well, it wasn't the question. Don't talk to me. I'm asking you, do you think we should put those cameras in the highest crime rate in the City of Sundbury? I want to know what that section is.
Those cameras could be better.
Answer my question first, please.
I'm going to. Those cameras could better be deployed more heavily in the downtown area, around the high school. Skate park obviously needed help, didn't get it. So the cameras that are looking at the river, those cameras could be deployed in those areas and be a little more effective. It'd be a better help toward, to the police department.
I didn't know we had a high crime rate on Market Street.
Well, I think there's a lot that goes on in Market Street that's.
We have a change in people that whack out some meters and stuff. They're whacked up and stuff and stupid stuff like that, but chief, do we have any high crime rate on Market Street?
Oh, I'm going to crash into a goose car.
No, I'm just trying to say we're just high crime rate. We need to move.
Talking to the chief.
Well, no, you posed a question, you made a statement, you tell us where it's at.
I just told you.
You give us some suggestions. I'm, okay, if you don't know for the high crime.
That's what you're saying.
Okay, you think Market Street's a good place for cameras?
Well noted.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Oh, yeah, Dave. He's been sitting here for a while.
Come over here, Mr. Marshall.
Yeah. Say hello to everybody. Especially the new board members. Dale and, uh, Mr. Rechner. And your head office right down like that.
That's correct.
All right. My first question, Mr. Rechner, would be, could I have you come down to 239 Spreu Street? City has the keys, and please go through. This is my argument. Here's the property, and I've been there since 2006. October 12th, 2006, it was condemned. After that, there has nothing been done to that property except for what Mr. Truke just did this past summer. He went down in the back and got rid of all the trash and trees and everything that was there. But we still have a problem after that. We still have a crime rate problem down there. The crime rate was they were breaking in. I called, uh, the board director here, and he went down and took care of the problem and got the locks and that put on. And he also locked up the cellar way, so no more critters get down there and find a home. But again, we have the front porch that has a radiator system in there where God knows what's living in there, but I have to live by it. I have to live by it now for how many years? Would you live by it?
Absolutely not.
Why do I have to take this when the city owns this property? Mr. Zerbi, would you please stand up, please? You were in the property. Would you please give a little orientation of what that property looked like when you went through?
Um, I have to get guns from my chief first before I can say anything like that.
He should be able to do it, chief. It's nothing against his honest question.
No disrespect, but I want to pin him down with his testimony.
I'm not using his testimony. I'm asking him to speak.
I suggest, sir, respectfully.
Yes.
Follow your right to no request, and if there's a report available, we'll give it to you.
All right, now, not if I say this to you. Was it the cleanliest place you ever saw?
Once again, Mr. Marshall, no disrespect. I'm not talking to you right now. My police officer with the city.
I understand.
I don't want to say I'm turning.
I understand. It was clean when it sold again.
Yes.
In fact, it was.
It was very clean.
Yes, it was very. Now, you're getting this place free. Am I correct on that?
We got, we got some more money.
You got some more money.
Yeah.
Is 239 on that?
239's always been on the list.
It's been on the list, Dave, but now.
We don't own it.
We don't own it.
We have the same situation as 709 Edison right now.
Hey, we've been going back and forth. We have been going back and forth with lawyers on, do you want to buy it? Well, why would you ask me to buy it if you didn't own the place?
Because we don't want to own it.
Well, then you own it.
We don't.
You're asking me you want to.
We don't own it.
We don't not own it.
We said we would help you acquire it if you want to do that. That's what's at, legally.
Dave.
City's not going to buy half doubles.
Dave. Now, we've been going through this with attorneys. Still continue to go through this with attorneys.
That's where we're going to get us up.
Back the paper. Proven paper. The city owns that property.
We do not have legal title to that property.
Do I have an attorney that can verify that with me?
According to the tax records, the City of Sundbury is listed as the record owner from 9/10/2007 by action taken at civil action, DOP number, uh, 071674.
The title was not transferred to the redevelopment authority.
I believe, well, that may be the case, but a declaration taking is.
Doesn't, doesn't the judge have to sign off on it yet? The judge will not sign off on it? I asked for a copy of those papers, Terry, and it was Judge Taylor who made the decision. And he will not sign, he says right in here, until the owner is notified, there will be no signature. Is that basically what's on that?
So you're going to let the property go to hell?
You have to go. I think your fight's with the judge.
He went through it, and he's done with it.
No, he's not. He just said he, there's no, I read the paper, am I right? Until the judge, until they find that they own or.
What is the city doing to notify the, uh, said owner? What is the city doing?
Just like you could try to get everything you said, is to put things in the paper, down, try and try to actually find them. I understand she does that, but she used to live out of a car. I don't know if she's still living out of the car or not. We need, we need to physically find her.
Well, how can you demonstrate resolution to this issue?
Boy, I can tell you that two weeks ago, I found a nephew, okay? He claims he's going to find out where she lives. I'm in witness court right now. That's all I can tell you. No guarantees, but I found a nephew two weeks ago.
Okay, and, and still this property remains blighted. So what will the city do to alleviate blightedness of this property?
The redevelopment authority really has no, that's one of the things we're talking about, the retreat that's coming up in February. We have, we have all kinds of blighted property initiatives we've been doing for three years. We have no way to address those half-doubles that are connected. We've had, we, there's lawsuits in the city right now for those exact same things. We need to be able to get, and like I said, 709 is the same thing at us. We have the exact same problem up at us that the bank just walked away from. Now we're trying to get, at least get it from the bank. But the City of Sundbury redevelopment authority doesn't necessarily want to, want to own those unless we can own both of them to tear them down or make sort of fix them up.
Well.
We're all involved. The only resolution we have is if we can get the acquisition from the judge is to turn around and sit down with the other people that own the other half, which would be Mr. Marshall in this situation.
Well, I'm Mrs. Marshall, so thank you very much.
I'm sorry, okay. If the UN say, okay, here's the deal, but the city's not buying a half a double in that bad a shape and fix it up, so the deal is if we can get it for free and give it to you, that's the only hope that we have.
Would the city consider then buying our half of the property to alleviate the situation?
We've never bought a, no, because here's the problem. We've never bought a house yet with anybody living in it. That's a whole new standard, and Jamie could get into that when we start talking about how to use the money. These are all abandoned properties that we, that we deal with. We haven't dealt with a single one with anybody living in them for all kinds of reasons. Can't use block grant money.
My suggestion, once we find Mrs. Ross, okay? If it's possible, have the judge sign off like Dale mentioned, because that is the holdup. Because he wanted to notify her. That was the holdup from day one.
She's never legally been served.
Even though he was in the property and so forth.
Would you guys take the property if we got it? Did you take it for free?
I do not want, the property has been so blighted, it's going to be a money pit to fix. I would not take on someone else's problem because they chose to allow it to become blighted.
But I, I didn't.
That's not fair to me or my husband.
Mrs. Marshall, I did finish that. I think under, there's an act, Jamie, where the city redevelopment authority can give an incentive cash value towards that property to rebuild it. Am I correct? I'm, I'm sorry, I'm thinking, okay? Because I understand where you're coming from.
It might be your home program on, on, on.
Okay. So the incentive would be for you to acquire it with, with some type of monetary, and I can't pronounce it, but I thought there was an act somewhere, a section somewhere.
Or making a home program. There might be. The housing program that's out of Seattle, so I'm not real familiar with everything they have available there. It's usually based on income.
But I, back to the Ross, the nephew, I'm supposed to be getting a phone call any day, okay? That's the issue right there. That's, that's, we have to do it that way. And all the documents that the gentleman just read off, it's probably all 100% accurate, obvious, but until the judge signs off, it's not legally in redevelopment, from what I understand. I'm no attorney, but.
I notice we've gone a long, long years, Terry. The question about, we still need to offer some kind of policy, I can say. We have a ton of these homes, and half the City of Sundbury is double homes. We have a ton of these situations, and I don't, we don't have an answer for them. But I can understand what, you know, it's not my solace for you right now, but other than us acquiring them and seeing what we can do, but I, there's no way the city is, I can say as soon as you tear that half down, then you have lawsuits on the other side. Who's going to put the side out? Who's going to fix my window? Who's going to do this? Who's going to do that?
I said to your code office the other day, I said, we've got the property at the corner of Spreu Street. The old hat factory, or shirt factory. Larry Harmon owns that. You know how bad a shape that is on the outside, Jim? You went by there many times. The pigeons are living underneath through, and yet she's going to rent space in that building? How can you rent it when you never get inspected? Was there an inspector there? When I talked to Joey, he said, you haven't been in there in 10 years. You know, I, I believe, I believe in fairness, everybody that has property, she's no different than anybody else in this world.
The redevelopment authority's only dealing with homes, so I, we'll look at that.
Well, back to our, our, our property. Excuse me, were you going to say anything more with regard to 239 Spreu Street? I thought, I thought you wanted to express better.
Well, just, I, I guess my observation is, under the eminent domain code, as soon as you file a declaration taking, title passes to immediately to the entity that files it. Then you've got some residual things that you worry about in order to get actual possession or to, to get, or to determine what the amount of just compensations. And those proceedings may take more time, but because title passes immediately, the city who filed the declaration taking becomes the effective owner and title at the moment of taking. Now, that creates problems for the city, obviously, because you have title, but you don't necessarily have possessions. But still, that's the situation which you find yourselves. I mean, you're, you're sort of become responsible, and it's a matter of finding this person so that you can relieve yourselves of your responsibilities. Going to get rid of it, but you own it now. But I, I'm not arguing with you, but our attorney isn't here, and our attorney says we don't.
Sure, sure. I've given my, my opinion, and certainly you want to solve this rap.
I may suggest that you look counsel, because I don't think your counsel's giving you good counsel. So I would suggest the city look, look counsel.
That's your opinion.
However, that is my opinion, thank you. However, this is still blighted property. The city has taken over possession of it. It has been major code violation. In fact, this past snowstorm, no one even came out to shovel the sidewalks on the property that the city has taken over. Now, it's a major code violation, isn't it? Wouldn't it be something that you would, you should be able to address those code violations at least? Because it's not only a safety violation and safety to my family, but also a health issue as well, because it's just not the cleanest place in, in the world. So, you know, we've been dealing with this, as Terry had mentioned, for many, many years. And, and my opinion, please, and I'm not trying to be disrespectful, but I just feel like we're just getting lip service from the city and from the council, and you're really not making this a priority. You're just doing what you need to do and saying what you need to say to try to pat us on the head and say, there, there, move on. And we have been patient enough, we have been kind enough, and now enough is enough. And something needs to be done to this property because it is affecting me and my home and my family.
So if it takes, I guess, to be back with your solicitor, and we'll get a meeting set up with Judge Taylor, we'll get this issue taken care of.
Okay.
And that's the way we'll do it.
We would ask that.
We do have a parking meet once a month. Every month, we've been doing it for three years. So it's not, you can say what you want, but that's been on this for three years, along with 40 other properties, and we're not the only property in St. Louis.
And that's sad, and that's really sad to me.
This is my.
But, but as my husband had asked, we would appreciate if you would put together a meeting with the judge, with your attorney, and we'll have our attorney there, and let's see what we can do to rectify the situation together.
I don't need to take another year. I have to get it over with.
Yes, let's take care of it right now, please. Thank you very much.
The city of Sundbury's not, we even paid a private investigator that said we could find her. He couldn't find her either, so we didn't make efforts.
And I appreciate that, and I guess it would have been better if I would have known all of this. It just seemed like nothing was being done, and that's what, how I form my opinion.
We don't want to give you a hope. That's why the nephew wants me to find his aunt.
Right to know.
And I appreciate that. We can have the meeting with, with the judge. If you raise that, we greatly appreciate it. You do have my husband's contact information, so thank you very much. I appreciate that.
239? Yes, ma'am.
239 Spreu Street.
Spreu Street. I'm sorry?
I'd like to know what's going on with the cat lady. My mother's been attending, you know, how often? I don't know the delivery. I apologize.
What's the question? The cat issue?
Oh, that's going on in town, or maybe just my house.
What's your name?
My name is Stephanie Schwartz. S H W A R T Z. Do you want to call me the crazy next door neighbor of the crazy lady, cat lady? Because we always say crazy cat lady, it's doors, but you're right, I know.
Where that's at, as you follow, brought this up in about the last five meetings that we had, and it's been discussed, and this is a whole new council, so I guess we'll discuss it again with this council. But at the time, at last council, there was not enough support to pass anything, so we looked at Northumberland, we looked at the counties, my carmel's, there's all kinds of, I don't know, nobody from this council has pretty much come out and said they want to support anything. And I would, just to give these two, and we have a third person coming on board, so we will have three new council people. They'll make sure that they at least see the notes from the last year and see if they want to pursue that.
Can I give you a little bit of taste of my world? Okay, this letter that I'd like to, um, read to everyone, just in response to, and I won't go into every little detail, it's too long, might break some parts along the way. I have two children, a three and a half year old and an 11 month. We cannot use anything outside due to the feces, the garbage that they get into, the vomit, the, the spray, I mean, that's the obvious stuff. I show the, the neighbors, we share a half a double. I show them seven flea bites on my kid when I have no animals. I keep a clean house. Okay, over and over again, okay? List lost time, and I cleaned the cat stuff along the way. I'm not, you know, I can do it too, it's just annoying. This was mine, I have a picture of it. Your cat pooped on my side once again. Two piles, bi grill, bi driver's tire, clean it up, dash Stephanie. Okay? Put it in their mailbox because in the past I have been over to their place and said, hey, can we work something out? Can we just take the food in their house? Like, come on, it's, it's going from two cats to five cats, so now I have about 25 cats that I recognize, and I can't do it. So they're on my crack now, okay, I'm getting away from where I'm. Back to everything else, um, this is in response to this. And a little background information, the first parking spot we're on the corner, I don't know what my entitlement is when it comes to parking spots, but I believe it's mine, and they would get the second one. That's just what it sounds like. If not, I don't really care. I don't use it as off-street parking. He seems to have it all the time to the point where they have two cars, they line them up, and then they wait. It's conical. Anyway, the other day, I needed to park out front in convenience to go somewhere so my fiancee could park in the back. Here, this is the note I get in response to this, two days later, and the cat stuff was not cleaned up. Dear spoiled rotten brat. I don't know if I'm going to get through this. He says, no, please and thank you, go a long way. Learned a lot from Josh, who's my fiancee. He may not like us, but at least he's respectful of me. Comes from a good stock. I know his grandmother quite well. We know more about you than you may think. Parking out front? Take it, please. I'm tired of taking care of it. And as for throwing snow, rocks, and most recently, cat flew over the fence. Smile, princess, you're on video. Well, good, good. It might add dance pants, but it's worth it. I don't care. Uh, Sharon, she said, he says Sharon and I, who was his girlfriend or whatever, I would, would do anything to help Josh, just because he isn't rude and disrespectful to you. He works 80 to 90 hours a week. He's home, he's sleeping. Construction will begin over here on their side at 7:00 AM Wednesday, and the roof will begin over, are going on in marked. Okay? Tried to embarrass us? Look at your actions, young lady. I'm just trying to keep a helping home. I can only do so much as I'd like to do it, and all I have to do is take the six bowls of food that they have to put out every night, and the six to eight beds on the back porch with blankets inside. That's all I have to do. I didn't ask you to quit smoking. I'm not burning candles or anything like that. I've never attacked you personally and called you disgusting or what I really feel like. You've attacked me personally and comparatively. Should have called the gentlemen all over here, and reported them, but chose to keep it civil, because I've never lived in town. I've told them previous times I don't want enemies. I've got, I'm in a thing, I've, I've been, I've been doing this for three years. I got another five till I can even get out of here. My sanity is gone. Like, I, I can't take my kids to play out in the snow because there's so much feces in there, and like, they're accusing me of PMS for rotten breath. I had a lot of hard times. My first kid is special needs. If you want to throw the disabled card out there, like, I'm not, like, I'm not telling them to change their lives or anything, I'm just asking them to take the damn food in the house. It's making me hate these poor animals. They're mean, they're not nice. It, it's just like one thing after another, and now to this point, I'm at my house almost daily, if, I mean, every day, all day, with the two boys. He's over there all this day, and he's a big guy. Do I feel threatened? Not necessarily, but do I think he could scare me? Yeah, because he has outbursts, and there's been a lot of exchange of emotions going back and forth. And at this point, I've used please and thank you, I've got it all written down, they've tried to bribe me with stupid little candlelight. I shouldn't, I shouldn't, I, it's, it's accustomed to have fleas too. Really? Um, I'm 29 years old, and I haven't had a flea bite ever in my life until I've moved to you. And it's increased and increased and increased. I don't, they like, they said, oh, we're doing trapping and this and that. No, you're not. You're domesticating all these cats, and that's not fair to the cats. It's not fair to me, it's not for, it's not fair for the people that you already proposed this terrible idea about that lived there before me, when you're the problem. If you were throwing all your cigarette butts over on my side of the driveway, I'd be throwing them right back over onto the porch. Or if my kid was throwing, you know, his balls on your side of the fence, you'd be throwing them right over. Well, your cat is feasting all over the rocks I paid for to make our place look as nice as we can with the little money we have extra, and now I got to use that, those rocks. It's little and petty, yeah, but it's gotten to that point. Over the fence? Yeah, I'm a terrible person, because I asked you nicely a hundred times to resolve the situation, and now it's not. And apparently, this isn't moving very quickly either for whatever reason, and it is hard living in a half a double. It is. And that is, there are some things that you have to let go, but this is taking over my life. I can't, and my sanity, I, I can't go through one day without these cats. Making me, I like.
You shouldn't have.
Let me explain how we're doing this. The reason, we couldn't get anything passed, and, you know, just like Northumberland, everybody else can't get any pass, is, is, it's, it's the enforcement issue, what it is, how you're going to enforce it. But again, we have a whole new council here. We will put this on the agenda. The guys, some of the guys in the past have talked about certain parts of it, which would be outside feeding, that could be a part of it. We'll put it on the agenda and at least bring it up to the whole entire new council at our next council meeting, to see if they want to go into the part, even if we just go to the new feeding on the back porch might help.
Yeah, if you just.
That was discussed before, but that 20-page thing that we're done with pass is just unbelievably unenforceable. So that's why we have to get that in.
I don't think it's fair to take them out to the, I don't know what the resolution is with the actual level of the amount of the feline, of the cats. I don't know. But I will tell you, there would only be five down there like there originally was when we moved in, and there wouldn't be 25. Like, the domesticated cat, three doors down is now feeding on our porch. It's just.
So the next meeting, we'll have something on the agenda. I'm not saying it's going to pass, and I want something there to at least try.
I just thought maybe a little bit of an emotional.
Some, some fingers back, some things back, really, but we can't, we cannot force that lady, the next, or maybe to remove that stuff over there.
Yeah, it's a chance.
If she has pets, then there. They were, they were getting, they were, were getting to an area where they have PCA individuals. We can't, there's no way cats, cats are not considered licensed anymore. We can't license them.
We can't license them. We can't, we can't leash, put a leash law on them.
Then how?
There's just no way we can do that.
Just to tell you off record, how do you advise me to stay sane in the meantime?
What I would advise you to do, what I would do if I was in that situation? I'd invest in a carrier and trap them and take them to the SPCA.
We've tried to trap them. We've tried, we have two.
I've seen them. Yeah, I went down North Pole.
We've tried, it's just that they're so domesticated, why go in there when there's two on the back porch? Well, they'll get it from inside. My fiancee, he says, "There's two," you know? We're, we're trying, we're trying.
We'll bring you that for example, to say, "Look at it."
And you talk about any of the, about people like parking spots and stuff, and he-
Probably on the street, anybody can park anywhere.
Do you do smart any spot? You want to, you can't park two things, or say that's my one. There's no such thing as driving a four.
Same way with the handicap parking spot. You might be handicapped, you might get spot, but it doesn't say that you're right at the spot. Anybody that has handicap spots, people.
Where's people that sort of didn't get that, that's like, yeah, maybe.
Anybody else?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
Man, I didn't get, I didn't know if you were there. Hi, Regina Russell. I want to say Happy New Year to everybody and welcome all the new council people. Um, I wanted to address something that came to my attention. Only Nicholas, the code office, uh, got a telephone call to let me know about the ice on my sidewalk, which I appreciated. But it led to me, um, to also notice that the accumulation of the water when it is, um, melting rolls off down the sidewalk in the curves, um, into that area that's for wheelchair pedestrians. And so when it gets cold, that is icy. I would like to know who's responsible for that? For remove, for, you know, putting salt down to remove the ice.
On every intersection?
I don't know about every intersection, but I would certainly think that if a cat is made on the sidewalks for wheelchair pedestrians that have to use it, and it's nothing but ice, how are they-
You're talking about the streets up?
The curbs.
Sidewalk? Well, the property owner is responsible.
No, no, that's not my responsibility.
If it's a sidewalk that you're brought-
Yes, yes.
They had to cut for, cut for yellow.
Yes, that's, that's specifically for handicap people according to the Americans Disability Act.
Right, and so, and so intersection.
No, it's not just at the intersection.
You don't have any in the middle of blocks.
You have them on the corners at the end of the sidewalk, and it doesn't just, you know, uh, yeah. Well, it's not always an intersection.
Anyway, it's a street. You're talking about ice on the streets?
Yes.
Are those state streets? Any questions?
Well, who is responsible for removing the salt? I mean, putting down salt and removing that ice.
If it's on the sidewalk.
It's not on the sidewalk. It's, the water ran down the sidewalk. It ran down that indentation that is put there so that someone with a wheelchair can roll up on the sidewalk and that they can have passage.
Mrs. Russell, come up for a second. Would you, I want, I want to just, no, I just want to show you something.
Well, I, but my thing is, is that you have the streets.
The city paved street, the city plowed streets, the state plowed streets. It's their responsibility to make them passable. It's always responsible at every intersection to put salt in the intersection.
Well, I'm, I'm-
Well, I'm done, that's, I'm just giving the answer.
You know, go with me here because I don't know.
That's the answer.
The answer is that the people who you pay to pave the streets are responsible for the ice that is on the street in front of-
It's always responsible to remove ice. The city is responsible to plow streets to make them passable, just like the state is responsible to plow roads to make them passable.
And therefore, the city is responsible for putting down salt on the streets to melt the, um, ice.
Some places they put them on, but it's not there to get rid of every bit of ice on the streets.
Well, it seems like there's, uh, that responsibility is put on each homeowner to make sure that there's no ice on the sidewalk.
That's right, that's a walking pair.
And, and we, and these people have to no longer go use the sidewalk with their wheelchair. So now they have to ride their wheelchairs in the street because there's no one putting salt down in the street for them.
We have that in the summertime. Unfortunately, some of those people have to be in the street because we can't get people to fix the sidewalks that we're working on all the time.
That the code office should be fined.
Well, people get fined, and people don't own property. We go through this whole thing all over again. But getting back to your question.
So, so my question is, is a voided question?
Can I, Dave, can I chime in next, with the next public works for? Uh, if you see something like that, it's in a street like that, it becomes a safety hazard, please call the city board. And I'm sure they will come down there and sprinkle salt on the intersection where it's at. For the reason, because, you know, a safety, if someone falls in there. I'm positive that they were-
It's not only falling, it's the person with the wheelchair.
I know, I know, anything like that. I mean, uh, Dale must be before you, but in the past, if we had a problem like that, you know, there was always salt, and I'm sure if you called the board and said, "We have bad sex salt on such quarter, on fourth and Long Street," I'm sure the boys would show up there and run the sauceburger a little closer to the curb.
Well, now, that leads to another point that I want to bring up because with me getting, with someone calling and saying that I had ice on my sidewalk, the inspector came and wanted to verify it, and they did so. So when you're verifying it, if that person is an inspector, shouldn't he have noticed that and taken care of that matter? Or does, or do I have to, as a, as a resident, make the phone call and bring that to his attention?
Do you think there's an intersection anywhere in the city somewhere that doesn't have bikes on it?
You know, you're asking me the questions, and it's like you're asking me a question within a question, and you're not really addressing my concern. I have a concern. It's, I'm not trying to fall fine, tic-tac and all of that. I just ask the question. I'm trying to bring it to your attention, and that's pretty much it.
Clear, Mrs. Russell, because I'm going to be involved with that. What you're saying is the water comes down your sidewalk and it runs onto the-
Any one sidewalk that has that.
But it goes onto the ramp. Where, I'm going to call the ramp, because it's handicap, ADA accessible.
Yes, yes.
I don't think that that's the city's, that's still our first sidewalk.
Of course, that's not my sidewalk. Don't try to give that to me.
Mrs. Russell, you bring to the street itself a part of the handicap, right?
No, she's talking to ramp.
The ramp and the street, because the water flows down that ramp, and that's what causes all of that, I'm sorry, water to turn into ice, actually turns into a puddle. So the temperature gets low, it freezes, and there-